The hour has struck. It's seven o'clock right on the dot. So we'll officially call this meeting to order. June 28, 2017 of the town board work session. Let the ministry reflect that all the board members are present as well as some members of staff and our esteemed audience that has joined us this evening. We have the minutes of June 14, 2017 before us and we're to entertain a motion of approval for those minutes.
I'll second.
It's been moved in a second. Any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, the minutes will stand approved and written. We have no monthly report update. That will be for our next meeting. We have no public hearings this evening. We have one guest. This is regarding incentive zoning to allow a restaurant at 2146 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. Mr. Costello, if you would tee that up.
Thank you, Tony. Tonight with us, we actually have two people coming in to talk about a proposed restaurant. We have Michael Coates. Do you want to come up to the table? Michael Coates and Brad Gross. They've flown in from Kansas City to be with you tonight. Michael was here earlier in the month and had a chance to meet with us and I about the potential for a possible incentive zoning application. This is the site, as you know, is Dr. Falone's property at 2146. It's the property between the Car Wash and the Mose and AT&amp;T. And they came to us. We met, I wanted to make sure we met with supervisor and then he suggested that we come, have him come to meet with you tonight to talk about the potential for a restaurant on the site. Now, they did send a lot of material and I think you all got it. And with that, I'm going to let you make your play here.
Great. Yeah, like Jim said, so we met first of all, Michael Coates, the burns of McDonald, an architect working with PSP, a developer for the proposed KFC. It's Brad Gross, one of our engineers here to accompany me to talk about the project. So as stated, we were here like the first week of June to actually visit the site and actually kind of do a site analysis, just to kind of do a test fit to make sure the actual restaurant fit on the site. So while we were here, we decided to come to the city just to kind of get an idea of your approval process, your meetings, and you know, that approval, like I said, process for getting that restaurant on that site. So like I said, we met with Jim, Tony, and they suggested that we get this information together as far as site plan, some information to send to the board for initial review and in order to further go down that road to get this approval. So what we're here for is to actually discuss with you this project and the path forward for the future meetings and approval.
We did also talk about the incentive zoning process. So you're aware of that. And we also talked about the Lu Amp and what the Lu Amp tried to accomplish.
Correct.
And the fees associated with Lu Amp. So they've got a good background knowledge of what's going on for 41250.
So what we sent you was the kind of conceptual site plans, some initial renderings and just a floor plan. So that gives you a general idea of what the KFC will look like on that site.
So I think one of the things that we spoke about when you were here, you know, I talked about the fact that the board probably not be too crazy about the Wild Stripes, the Big Head and some of the other things.
Right.
And so can you say a little bit of, a little bit more around, you know, what your thoughts might be for, for this, for this site?
Yes, and that's, you know, that's one thing that we definitely knew would come up as it.
I decided I got right to the chase.
Understood. Understood. Yes, we actually saw that. So we actually have different options actually for, for the, I guess, the exterior paint scheme. That's one of the, as far as brand recognition initiatives from KFC and their reimagining of their building. So that's really an item that the brand is actually pushing for their new restaurants and remodel program.
These, this here?
Yes, but there's actually, just for reasons of this nature where people may not be as receptive to the stripes and, you know, the wild colors. There is actually different, I would say, alternates as far as different paint schemes, taking away the stripes that I actually have here to actually look at it, if that's something that you would be open to, to review. Or is there, or is it just no paint at all? It is?
Well, I, no, and I appreciate you saying that. I would say this, from my perspective, the visuals that were sent, that, yeah, right here.
Correct.
I don't care for that at all. And my rationale behind that is that this board spent quite a bit of time in that area trying to get a feel and aesthetic there that we think would be complementary to the neighborhood behind it, but also, you know, in a general sense, what the vision is for that general area. And you've got Jeremiah's there that we think embraced that very well with kind of a barn, kind of a historic look. Dr. Falone's got a couple of buildings there with some restaurants that are kind of unique to, you know, the four corners, not the four corners, but the 250 Penfield Road area. And I think just as an extension, this property kind of fall, in my mind, falls in as an extension to that particular site. And what was sent on these photos, I don't think complements what is existing there as we see it today. Quite honestly, I think more of the brick facade, if you want to call it that, exterior is more of what we're looking for in that particular area. And I just want to be perfectly honest with you guys. I mean, you obviously came here, you know, from Kansas City and I just think you deserve to hear, at least from my perspective, on what I would like to see in a potential building that still maintains the integrity of the branding. I can appreciate that, but also understanding what the local community and the local governing body might want to see in that particular area on that, that particular site.
So is that, I was thinking, we can go through different options as far as paint. Like, that's not the main as far as what you see there. Like I said, we have different options and we're willing to work with the city just to get some sort of, you know, midway point for that, so.
Yeah, I think, I think the conversation, if we even get to where we're talking about approval, because we're not there yet, you know, we certainly, it's not as if you can assume that this is going to be an approved project, that KFC is going to go there. And that being said, that I think we, if we are going to have the conversation, and I agree with Andy, Councilman Moore, in that we're not talking about paint, we're talking about materials.
Right, right, right. So this?
This was photographs taken this morning, actually, by Zach Nurseinger over in Webster on Ridge Road of their KFC.
And watch this, this is the one that's up by Aldis?
Aldis is in the Sim Plaza next to Marina Dodge, isn't it, Sim Journal?
Okay.
So just another local.
Are the, are the KFCs run by a franchisee?
Yes.
But corporate handles the real estate?
The branding.
Okay.
The branding of.
Got it.
So there's the, there's a developer that owns the land and the franchisee has an agreement and the branding is more of a corporate KFC that comes down to the franchisees.
Do you have a franchisor in mind at this point in time, or is this, it happens afterwards?
No, there's a franchise, yes.
Okay.
Is this the first use proposed for this property, Jim? I can't remember at this point if we.
No, if you remember, no, that's, that's a good point.
Falone was looking at me, just tell you at one point.
Right, okay. But we also had a situation where Dr. Falone had a proposal where he was going to incorporate this property into a portion of the Car Wash property to the north with another larger building. He never did have a building to the rear and we'll have to talk a little bit about the rear later, but he was going to incorporate both portions of those properties to build a larger building. That fell through because the Car Wash was sold to another gentleman and he's, he's left with his remaining parcel.
Okay. So do you want to go through the other options?
I mean, there's, I can pass this around. I could say this.
Yeah, they're definitely prepared for getting backlash on.
I kind of teed that up because I didn't want the, I wasn't spending the guys to come in, you know, to hit the bus.
We understand that.
You know, to hit the bus as a courtesy.
No, understood. Start off with the tough ones.
The bright red has got to go. I mean, that's the whole point, what you're saying, what Councilman Moore was saying, you know, create a certain color scheme there.
It's all one set.
Beige.
Oh, I see now.
They're all, it's one.
That's all one set of rocks.
Right, so you kind of go through the different.
So that must be more red. Are they trying to go back to the retro look of like the original KFCs with the red stripes?
It's kind of more of a, you know, retro Zanell, so kind of touch on the history a little bit, but bring it up with modern terms, so.
They want to catch people's eye.
Yeah.
On the road.
And that also leads into, while we're looking at that, also, we talked about signage and the amount of signage on the building also. So I know there was discussions of signage on the main, main roll and then the side and what was considered front rear and what we can actually do with that signage. So that's probably another discussion that we would probably want to have also.
I think you don't want to put the cart before the horse because we, a major discussion on incentive zoning needs to be had and that's not, you know, that's not your call. And just, I think, some discussion, while I appreciate all that's been, that's been provided, sometimes we don't get much at all. It's appreciated to have, to have so much provided to us. You know, this is a first look.
Right.
And to talk about signage, I think you don't want to make assumptions and put too much work into it. We need to have a conversation first about some of the more meatier pieces of this development.
I'm, I'll, I might take two steps back. I'm not even sold if a fast food restaurant is really the best use for that property. I mean, we have a Car Wash with traffic moving, we have a Mose with a drive-through.
Panera.
I'm sorry, Panera with a drive-through.
Mose has it too.
No. Mose has no drive-through, there's no Mose there.
I'm just trying to.
This is the alley right next to it.
I'm not sure how many more kinds of fast food establishments we have envisioned for that area. I mean, I, I don't think that that's really what I'm looking for at this point. I mean, I like the idea of a larger building to kind of consolidate some properties where the Car Wash would have been or something like that, but, I mean, we've tried to do Lu Amp, but at the same time, we're going to have so many different cars flying around that parking lot now between two different drive-throughs, a Car Wash.
A daycare.
Daycare in the back and I'm just trying to, I'm not really sold on the fast food chain moving in there right now.
Well, it doesn't have to have a, a drive-through. I mean, like Mose doesn't need a drive-through.
Right. I mean, is that even an option?
As far as, now, that's, that's part of the, the restaurant. That pretty much dropped most of the, the sales of the restaurant.
That makes sense.
And I can't remember, Michael, at the meeting that we had early on, we talked a little bit about the back portion of the property.
Right.
Is there intent to own the entire property? Are you going to split it off?
Own entire property. Use them as a detention area.
Is that what you want to use it for?
In the back, yeah.
Because I know you did need to do something on the site, so.
Okay.
So that back area would kind of be preserved in the right way.
Correct.
Any discussion, any discussion about something along these lines?
Yeah, we can go back and talk to, talk to the franchisee and kind of look at that as far as an option, as far as exterior.
I find it interesting that, I, I understand from a marketing perspective why there's probably this direction's been going either in new builds or in remodeling, but I also think it's worth noting that in today's day and age, we're beyond the, we've got to see it from our car mentality. That's not important to, to people in this day and age. We find KFCs on our phone and, and find our way there or we'll find, so, so, you know, that, that argument to me, while I understand it from a marketing perspective, the drive-by visual, that's not compelling to me as far as a reason to change the landscape or to, to feel compelled to have to agree with a corporate, corporate logo or a corporate look for, you know, drive-by purposes. I just, I, that to me, I think as time goes on is less and less compelling, just as we've seen other developments, other restaurants come in as well.
That actual wording is, is in our zoning ordinance and the sign division of the code.
I'm not talking about signs, I'm talking about.
No, but everything on that building is considered to be a sign.
Right, right.
Something to attract your eye to the site.
Right. Now, I think if we did, did pursue this, something along these lines would blend in a lot nicer, it would fit with.
So one of those sheets has, that whole, that whole set that you guys passed around was tiers going back, less and less color, really less and less pop, until one of them.
You have earth tone there.
On the left side, probably the earth tones without stripes. That's more comparable to that photo. I think it was one set that went through.
We said reds.
And I know, I know you brought up brick here on the exterior. Would Ephesus be an option also?
I think you're getting too far ahead in the weeds. We're, we're just seeing this for the first time, frankly, and I, I'm not at a position where I'm even discussing whether this is going in or not yet. Well, no, I don't think we are. But the colors, I prefer these colors. I mean, anything beyond that red, the red's too flashy and doesn't fit with what that mixed-use area is.
Well, we talked about that. I mean, everything you've done out there is an earth tone color. It would not make any sense, assuming that you would ever even consider it like forward, it would not make sense to stick something out there that is into the.
Square footage of the building?
Uh, it is. I just hit that.
Fifty hundred?
Yeah, it's like eighteen.
Should be in those sheets.
Yeah.
I got it right here.
It's nineteen hundred square feet.
Nineteen hundred square feet. What's the occupancy per nineteen hundred square foot building, you know, again?
Ephesus, business, that's fifteen, yeah. So we got, it breaks up basically, you have assembly at the front for seating, then you have back of house, which is a different occupancy. So if you just round off, you can say, you'll say just business and say one hundred occupants per square foot, and you'll say, just say twenty, twenty people.
Seating again was?
Thirty.
Thirty?
Thirty seats.
Thirty, based on, based on your, on your letter that was dated June 22nd.
Okay.
Estimated traffic.
Yeah, like three hundred to four hundred.
Three to four hundred.
Yeah.
For the average daily.
Right.
Parking, parking for twenty-two, drive-through, nine stack.
Correct.
Employees eight to twelve concurrently, I'm guessing, dependent upon obviously time of day. Hours of operation, ten A to eleven P.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I would, just in conclusion, I would ask that you go back to your franchisee and see if, you know, some type of resemblance of the building that is up in Webster is something that would be considered. At least I would look at it more favorably if the potential of the exterior was more in line with what we're seeing in these, these photos.
Is there any other actions that we would need to do to bring back to the board for more discussion, or what would be the next steps from, from here?
So, so certainly one of the things that we haven't, you know, had any discussion, I don't know to what degree you had with Jim, is the discussion around the incentive zoning component of that. So there's that piece. I think the Lu Amp piece is pretty well defined by Formula and so that one is, you know, is pretty well, so we need to have some discussion on incentive zoning, on the incentive zoning component of that. The, the other thing that you mentioned, so that, that's a new piece of information that you'd be taking the whole piece of property utilizing the easterly portion of that property for stormwater management.
Correct.
So that then would be just left, you know, once you put in some type of pond, rain garden, whatever, then that would be left as what I'll call buffer space for the neighbors to the east.
Correct. But I know that was one of the concerns we brought up as far as having that residential area behind there.
Yes.
With a restaurant company in, you got, you know, your light pollution and your traffic that we want to make sure that we control and possibly smell, something like that just from the, so that's all something that we've addressed here as far as the times.
Would you be comfortable if, if the board asked for a deed restriction against any future development other than your stormwater management facility and possibly, depending on the situation, maybe some parking adjacent to the access road if you needed extra parking or if somebody did, without encroaching into the tree line area? Is that something you could?
Yeah, Brad, look at where that detention pond ends up at, so, as far as to add that in.
Okay. And then I think, I think what you probably heard from the majority of the board is that board certainly looking more favorably with a different, a different style exterior. So you've got one reference point, the Webster store, that I'm guessing is fairly, fairly new, new within the last year or two. And that, you know, certainly earth tones are more positive, but I, but I would say that, again, based on Councilman Moore's opening comments about the area fitting in with the area, you know, is something that, that you should go back to your client and have some, you know, conversations with them about the thought of more of what I would call this style versus this style.
Mm-hmm.
So, and get, get a sense from them. Certainly you can feed that information back to Mr. Costello. We'll continue, this is a held item, what we call a held item. I don't think this board is at a point that they're looking to schedule a public hearing at this point. I think there's a few more questions that need to be answered and a few more details to be worked out before I think this board would commit to holding a public hearing. And I would encourage you, any, any information sharing back and forth that you would do that with Jim and Jim will make sure that he updates the board accordingly.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
Other, other questions at this point?
That was, anyway, I was just to get your feedback and to see our, our next steps here as far as where we go from here.
Okay. So board, any additional comments or input? Okay, and then staff, any, any additional comments that we have not discussed that you should, you believe this should be part of the record?
No, we have some technical issues that we, we would have to work out, but again, that goes back to Paul's comment. I mean, you're not there yet, so it doesn't matter at this point.
Waste your time or energy if you're doing.
Basically, so you want us to kind of resubmit some other kind of information as far as exterior wise and materials?
Yeah, they just, you did the last time and certainly you're going to have to talk to your clients about whether they're willing to agree to these things or not.
And then we will submit that, so if we were to resubmit that again, will we have another, as far as kind of this type of initial board meeting prior to the public hearing?
Public hearing.
So we would have kind of another working meeting.
So the next, the next work session would be on July 12th is our next scheduled work session. And so before any hearing, formal hearing would be scheduled, we'd have to have a broader dialogue in and around some of these points that we discussed.
Yeah.
Okay?
Great.
Anything else, staff? Okay, great. John, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for making the trip.
Thanks for having me.
Yeah, you can have, you can have those, I got them set here if that works.
Do you want to keep the colors or do you want to get those back?
Uh, do you want, if you'd like that?
Yeah, I'll take them back to you if you want them.
You got it.
Just when you're over there in that, in that, in that area, just get a vision of what is that and how, what would fit best, you know?
Definitely do that.
Give you a picture, a big picture or something.
Might as well keep one of those. Can I, can I keep that?
Yes, yes, yes.
All right.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks for coming in town.
All right, go back.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to our one and only action item that we had this evening. That's a carryover from two weeks ago. We'll invite Mr. Edwards and Mr. Baker to the table. And this is for Vision Dodge, additional parking at 9:20, Panera and Trail. And I'll ask Mr. Valentine if he would give us a snapshot update since the last time the board had gotten together.
Yep, since the board's last discussion, one of the threats was we've got some new information, share it with PRC as well as get some input from the conservation board. The conservation board did not or has not had a meeting since that last discussion, but we did invite them to PRC. We were fortunate enough that three of them did come, attend PRC, sat in during the discussion. I tried to capture kind of the thoughts and the feedback, technical comments that came out of that, shared this with the board earlier and shared it with Mr. Baker earlier this week. So those are kind of some of the technical comments that PRC had and as well as some of the thoughts of the conservation board that was there. So we kind of focused on, you know, the what-ifs, if it does move forward, there was some tree loss that was out there, some trees were taken down or dead, and I tried to highlight that, you know, if there was live trees that were taken down, is there an area on the site that could be, you know, revegetated with those trees? Obvious concerns about the steep slope areas, you know, stability of that, that would still be vetted out through the planning board process and a preliminary final hearing with them. And then also, you know, knowing that the park is behind that, you know, making sure that, you know, there's some potential buffer in there, whether it be berms or fencing or something to, you know, block any view from the park, as well as, you know, limited headlights as, as they come and go. Mr. Baker and Mr. Edwards, we're at PRC and, you know, heard that discussion, so this is new information to them as well. Obviously, they had some similar concerns about safety for their own employees and, you know, with the slope as well. So I do have a set of the plans we can put up if the board would like to look at those further.
If you would, Mark.
Yep.
We have something to talk to them.
Point out on the.
Let's put them up. While you're, while you're doing that, as part of any discussion, was there any discussion or need for any variance for what was discussed or being talked about?
Um, no variances, obviously they'd have to go through the steep slope, you know, EPOD process, that'd be something the planning board would work through as those items and that's part of the review is the, you know, stability of the slope, making sure there's no further erosion, you know, how that would, you know, be handled through that, but no particular variances from setbacks or anything else that go to the zoning board. If it did go back to the planning board, we always, obviously we'd run it back through the conservation board as well.
Sure.
It could have a whole board, you know, could have, you know, further input or, or response to it. So this is a scaled back version of what they originally had had. I think that's the last time the planning board, they came in and they had, an original proposal, you know, was to kind of come in here, put in some large retaining walls in the front end, carve off, you know, a flat area and then put in large 25, 30-foot-high retaining walls on the backside of that. The planning board wasn't keen on that. This is the natural topography out here, so whether, you know, as part of the original Rink-Dink development, that was graded out, but there are some, you know, relative flat areas or some plateau areas that were carved.
Before you sit down?
Yep.
Again, would you just, would you just highlight the overall property of Vision Dodge?
Yeah, so Vision Dodge's property actually comes back here, goes along the park and then back out. So green space, you know, they have plenty of green space. This is kind of that bluff area, as people know it down from the bottom, you know, that sand hill. And we did have the fire marshal there and he had some conversations about, you know, getting access to that. You know, once in a while, kids try to climb it, get halfway up, get stuck, and then the fire department has to come in, they just be coming off this corner here and then have a repel team coming down. He was looking at if there's some opportunity along this top edge to get there, you know, a safer location for the fire department, not encouraging, a balance between encouraging a trail to get kids there or you're finding it already now, but getting the, you know, the fire department or the work to see, create better access to get to there. So their property goes kind of well beyond what the limits are, but the slope, you know, kind of starts to, it's coming up a little bit and then it starts falling off and then this is here, it's kind of hard to see, this is actually along the great creek down below.
Where do you see the berm would go? If we did a berm?
They would have them berm right off the back edge of that, that last group of parking.
How much land is there?
Um, there is some, some room behind that. I mean, then that's, we'd actually, you know, define that more closely. Right now, it's kind of. Right now it's kind of a schematic, these are actual, they have the contours done, so the topo of it, but that's something the planning board would get into is, you know, what the actual dimensions of the spaces are and the drive aisles and everything else for that, but to have, you know, some sort of berm in this location here with trees or plantings and stuff, one, blocking the view of the vehicles from the park, and two, you know, God forbid somebody's, you know, moving cars around and, you know, go up and over that edge. And obviously, Mr. Edwards is concerned with the safety for his employees and staff that they wouldn't want it either, so he was, you know, thinking of a fence or some, you know, other.
But that's still providing that actual access.
Easy for a four wheel to go down the hill, it's easy to get up the hill with that four wheel truck?
Not that hill. Very easy to go over that hill. The grade is steep, it's not as steep as here. It's like a vertical area. You know, here it's still a slope. Behind the hotel, it's, you know, it's a slope you could, you know, you could go down, but if you had to, here is a vertical drop in this area over here.
Can you reiterate what the fire marshal said again about the access, is this preferable for the fire?
He was looking at opportunities if they could come along this edge here and then, you know, get back to this. If they have to get to this spot here, he thought this would be an easier route along this than, no, than coming up here, because they go from the top of the hill down.
Oh, okay.
From rappelling, so right now they kind of basically have to climb up a straight, straight up climb to get up to here to then get down to it. He thought this might be an easier access point along that top bridge, safer for the fire department.
It's crazy we have to think about that, but it's been happening forever.
What kind of buffer is being planned or intended between the Vision property, you know, with this enhancement and the hotel?
There is actually, and I can let the applicant share, but they're actually looking at an open area between them, whether it's gated or not. That was another thing the fire marshal brought up is, I can't get a fire truck up this slope here, you know. This would be just to take a number, or a four wheel drive vehicle up this little slope and access. He goes, I'd rather, we know this is fire truck safe and accommodating, they could come this way. And there's actually some agreements if there's overflow from the hotel, that they could park in a couple of spaces here in exchange for allowing them fire access.
So without, without instituting this plan that's proposed, there's some difficulty for fire personnel?
If this, if this wasn't here, this would be difficult for a fire to access. With this here, you know, it's a slogan, this is on gray, so these are equal to each other right now, it just goes straight across and it's a level pad, you know, from this to this right now, it just goes straight across.
Can you, you said overflow parking for the hotel?
They're, they have some agreements between them that it would be possible in a, in a high capacity time here that, you know, a couple of employees could park in this spot here, he could ship some of his inventory along, I believe their friends or, you know, have some business associations together, that, you know, obviously granting an easement for him that he could get a fire vehicle into here in exchange for that, that, you know, certain times of year if they had parked a couple of employees in a little spot there, then.
The fire vehicles makes sense, the overflow parking does not, to me.
Well, it wouldn't be, it'd be for employees only.
Right.
High time of the season, like Thanksgiving, Christmas time, if they've got.
Not for hotel patrons.
But, no, no, not for patrons.
Even for hotel employees, the only, I mean, the only way that I'm considering this is that normal consumers like me going to look for a car can't drive up there.
Correct.
So I wouldn't want anyone other than a Vision employee driving up there. I mean, it just, you open up the possibility of what if someone is coming from, going to the hotel and can't find a spot and sees three open spots there. I mean, I, I wouldn't want, all I'd want up there is inventory for the dealership and all I'd want up there is employees driving those, those vehicles to get out of there.
So there's this gate between Hampton Inn and, and Vision, nobody's going to be going through it unless.
Correct. We'd only have to get, figure out how to get for, in case of a fire, so they can get through the gate.
So if I was going to go look for a Dodge or whatever, and I wanted to look at the inventory up the hill, somebody goes with me, right?
Oh, absolutely.
And I'll just drive up there.
Oh, no, no. No, you'd be, you'd be on our lot before that and you could walk up there if you wanted. If they had a car, we would drive it down to you, back to the front.
Right.
And then get back around.
But the overflow is the first time I've heard that, and I, I don't.
Well, the gate. Yeah, it's possible to have, to make way for this parking, this inventory parking and, and have an agreement with the hotel whereby if they have some employees, they can park on your site somewhere, but not necessarily have to park in this designated area.
Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's the gist of what the overflow concept might be. Yeah, I understand.
Emergency, yeah, had a gate for emergency access, so the fire company would have a combination of the key or whatever they use. I think they've got a standard lock box.
Universal lock. As part of the Knox Box program.
That's it, Knox Box.
Standard key.
Right.
And so it's regardless who comes.
Right.
You know, they've got, they've got that standard or universal key.
Right. Yeah, that was the phrase, Knox Box.
Knox Box.
Could you, could you have any concerns in reviewing the PRC memo as far as satisfying their concerns?
No.
Dan's in agreement, we can satisfy the comments. Now, obviously, we're going to take care of any increased runoff, we're looking at having a gravel surface. They're going to be Jeeps, so we're not going to have a blacktop surface, so we're going to try to limit the amount of runoff that when it does rain, it doesn't shed off onto the steep slopes. As Mark mentioned, there's areas that are very steep, it's like a one-on-one, so it's like a 50% slope, but then I tried to create that little profile on the side, so that's actually taken through that section and it shows it going up at 50%, then it goes at about 5%. 5%, you know, wheelchair ramps, they're 8%. Sidewalks are 2%. So we're, we actually have the existing ground that's there now is like 5%. So we're right in between, you know, something manageable for a car, there's a lot of cars, but the hotel parking is a little bit on a slope as well, you know, so it's not uncommon. Plus, it would only be for Dan's employees, you know, that store the vehicles and then the salesmen that go up and get it and bring it back down.
Would it be year round?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so how would you handle it, how would you handle it in the winter? You know, so you got to put a snow. What's your, what's your plan? I get the fact that they're Jeeps, I get the fact they're four wheel drive.
Oh, we'd be less inventory like we do on our own lot, because we have to, we have to account for a snow pile somewhere. So we do it on all of our, the other 11 locations we have now, we, we have to keep less in the winter, which typically we have less anyway, because our turn, our sales rate is less in the winter. November, December, January, February, four slow months.
But you, but you still have to, you know, potentially do some amount of snow removal up there?
Well, it depends on, depends on the winter, obviously. So the last few years, not so much at all. You know, four or five years ago, we had to pile it and then bring snow removal trucks in and take it away, so.
Okay. I think, I think I may have motioned, so I apologize. I, I think it may, Dan, it may have been yourself, and I think my question was something like, what, what if we were to reduce the number? Sticks in the back of my mind, I didn't bring my map, that's got a few notes on it, but I want to say there's 46 or 49 spots there, and if that were to be reduced to something less than that, what, what kind of problems or what kind of issues do you see that?
It depends how low it goes, because at some point, it's law of diminishing returns. At some point, it's not worth spending the money to do all this.
I got it.
If you're down to two spots.
So, so, so this is the, you know, so, so take this, I, I, I want to, I want to tee this up that way, I'm not looking to hurt anybody's feelings, and, you know, but, you know, obviously, car dealerships are necessary evil. You know, all of us here have one or two.
Or a positive, I like to say.
I know.
Because everyone drives cars.
That's right.
And you do need to buy.
Everybody around the table, you know, got here because they drove a car. Most every family has got a couple of vehicles in their driveway or in their yard or what have you and, and.
Teenagers.
And.
And we spot you Penfield, Little Lake. So you got the baseball fields.
You know, but one of the things that, you know, that I think along, along that, along that area has been, you know, from a curb appeal standpoint, and I know curb appeal's important to you guys as well, because you want people to come into the, into the dealership because of the way it looks.
Absolutely.
Obviously, people come in for a particular type of vehicle, whether that's a Nissan or a Buick or, or Dodge Chrysler. But there, there comes a point that, you know, how much do you cram into a site? And so that's the piece that, as I've driven up and down and I've looked at that site, especially here over the last week, knowing that you guys were coming in and just trying to, you know, again, it's one thing looking at a map and Walt Baker does a great job with maps, but, you know, the, the general curb appeal and how that, you know, how that fits in with the area and at what point does it look, I'm not looking to hurt anybody's feelings, but at what point does it look, you know, inviting it versus at what point does it look trashy?
And I think that's what Walt did a great job here, because I was more aggressive. At first, we were looking for about 110 spots. That was our very first proposal, and, but that was back when we were really going to try to carve out much of the hill like our neighbor did and then put up the wall, and obviously that wasn't perceived very well at all. So with this look, really from the road, you're not going to see most of those vehicles, because if you go out and look at the trees, they're still blocking, they're blocking the first and second shelf, if, if they call the two shelves or whatever, I don't know what to call them.
Two tiers.
The two tiers. So, so I really think, I mean, Walt's done a nice job with the topography of the slope, unfortunately, with less than half of what I wanted, but we're still here.
Why are you talking about it?
I get it.
I can play devil's advocate to Tony that there does come a point where it doesn't matter if you, if it's reduced or not, and I personally think we're at that point where I'm comfortable as design, because I, there has been a reduction, I think, you know, it gets to, you know, six, 12, is it really going to make a difference, in my opinion? But I may have a different, you know, visual concept than others may.
Well, I guess I was going to ask Tony's question a different way. Is this for existing inventory on site or are these for 46 additional Jeeps also? Because I think, if, if I understand, maybe Tony's thought, and I've been there, you know, driven by, obviously, many times, would there be less inventory on the current site? Would it open up the parking lot a little bit more? Would it free up some drive lanes if you're coming to get your car serviced, if you're coming to park and look for a new car by having those 46 spots? Or is it really nothing on the existing site will change, we're just going to throw 46 new Jeeps up on the hill?
It's a great question. So in the front, if you drove our front row right now, Jeeps come from like the Timothy Patrick side along that front row, and then behind our first row of used cars, so going towards the Hampton Inn, right behind those is our Ram quad caps, because they're a little bit longer. So we're trying to delete the Jeep row in the front, because we're down to one row there. The ramps can then move up to there, because they're a little longer, and you got room between the building, because we don't double park those. And then that frees up where all the Ram parking was for our increased service department to put that new, the new drive-in service bay.
Yeah.
But with that, which is a great news, we're also bringing in more customers, but with more customers, we need more parking.
Right.
So we're really, I would say we're shifting the cars on the current lot up and then freeing up more customer parking. People that come in for their free oil change or tighter rotation.
That's good.
Right. And that's where we.
You'll still be bringing some inventory.
We'll be bringing some, but depend, well, maybe depending on how big we continue to grow with service. We have a 16 bay shop there, we continue to be at capacity in the shop, so now our future expansion there is to go to double or triple shifts. I mean, we have the building 24 hours a day in theory, but we'd have to find technicians to work the night shift and then the overnight shift. And there's a lot of logistics, is that so simple as just doing that, because you still have the cars that are parked from the customers that dropped them and are not picking them up to the next day? So we just, we run out of room, I mean, of storage rooms.
I thought you did indicate to us, though, particularly at PRC a couple of times, that you were trying to find a new location for some of your inventory in East Rochester.
We start, that's where we start out with 110. Really, we were taken also off of Delma, we rent at Del Monte, rent a three acre site over there that we store currently our Kias from our Kia store.
Oh, and Lyndon?
And Lyndon. And our Dodges, and our Buick GMCs. I mean, we're, we're in the same, same predicament really at our, is Kia, is Kia, is that you guys, is that?
East Rochester.
That's East Rochester, okay. So we've got a similar situation there that we have offsite storage. So with 110, it was going to be about 35, we were thinking 30 to 35 from current existing lot for additional service, and then the remaining 70 from offsite. Now we're trying to figure out, we're trying to figure out what we, you know, what we do to make that all work, so. So I would say, to answer you, it's a combination of both.
And the other day at PRC, you gave a quick narrative about tree, not, not so much what has been taken out, but what you're intending to have to take out. Can you just talk a little bit about that real quickly, because it was.
Basically, yeah, there's an access, obviously, Dan wants to have an access from, I mean, his property here, so it would be a drive aisle here to get up the slope, like I mentioned that it's, when you say all these contours, these are the ones I was talking about, it's like a 50% slope. It gets a little lighter here, but we're going to have to cut this area just to get up that grade, but then it flattens out through this area. There's a very mature tree that's actually in this, this sloped area through the center area, it's got to be about this bigger, huh? So that, that's going to be protected. And it also falls in that sloped area, and then we got a drive aisle to basically the back tier or the upper tier here. And then, and as Mark mentioned, the slope starts to fall off a little further up. There's a conservation line here, so we stopped there, of course, but the contours actually continue uphill and then they drop off and then goes down to the sand bar or the sand hill on the backside, so we can protect that. So there's existing trees all the way around the whole site, and there's a few trees that only have top growth on, pine trees that are relatively narrow. We would like to replace those with something more substantial, it's more of a, you get from a nursery that actually has a shape to it versus the ones that grew in the woods. As you all know, when they grow in the woods, they're reaching for the sky and the stuff on the bottom is kind of just, nothing. So there are very mature trees all the way through here, and a lot of them still have that top growth going on, but we're not going to touch any of that. This is a view of the photographs down here, I took from across the street, and it shows the front of the, the store, and then right where the hill area is here, and then from the top of the hill looking down through, because this is where that drive aisle would be, is right through here, there's actually a clearing through there, there's like one tree in the way for us to get up through there, but that's looking downhill through that space. And this was taken as fall was coming towards us, it was like last September in the woods. So I kind of give you more of a view. But the summertime, you don't see much, I mean, from the, from the road up, you're going to see a little glimmer of cars in crawl, but that's about it, you know.
And that was, thank you for bringing that up. That, that was my question, just to follow up on what was discussed earlier a couple minutes ago, is that if I'm driving on Panorama Trail, whether heading up to East Rochester or coming down towards Panorama Plaza and I'm looking up the hill, am I going to be able to see a parking lot, a tiered parking lot, or is the?
Not too easily. Yeah. It's going to be vegetated at basically what you see now.
Yeah, maybe in the winter, but you're talking less into your inventory in the winter time.
Right, correct.
So, and I asked many, I asked you if this was for storage or display, and you indicated for both, but now you're thinking it's more for, for storage than it is for display?
Well, no.
From the road, from the road?
Oh, from the road, yes, yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Is there a limit to how many spots or vehicles you can have on site right now? Either imposed by code or by town or state or anything that says?
There was, many, many years ago, when this was first approved, there was a resolution, somebody in the room wrote, that indicated there could not be any expansion, but that, they did go back years later and asked for expansion, the board, both the zoning board and the planning board granted expansion to it. And it's pretty much what they've approved over the years is what's there now.
Okay. Because there has to be a limit of.
Yeah, and our last expansion, it really got into, really, who the key was with the fire marshal, that we made sure to make fire lanes around the building that were, they never were previously.
He had to take vehicles off site.
We had to take additional vehicles off to make sure the fire trucks could always get around the back because it's a little tight. Actually, both back corners, how it was designed on the property back before I bought it was, was that way.
And that was a big issue with the planning board was basically a condition upon the new service bay area was to open it up around the building, make sure that a fire truck, and they actually physically brought a fire truck one day and made sure they could drive around the building with it and get access. And code enforcement's been, you know, keeping an eye on it, his staff as well, to make sure it is open, so it is functioning much better than it, than it ever had.
Right. Because I asked, because let's say there's 200 cars right now. By adding the 46 parking spots, you know, is it unreasonable to say 200 cars moving forward? Not 245 or 246?
I think that would be unreasonable to say.
Okay.
I mean, I'm personally, and I'm not trying to be mean.
No, I, no, but that's fair.
I think the key we always focus on is, we always try to stay, make sure the fire lanes are clear. And we always try to make sure that, that's our number one goal, is always the fire lane.
Right.
And even the offloading of vehicles, we had an issue for a while.
We don't, we don't do that anymore.
No, but I'm saying there was an issue, you know, back in the day on Panorama Trail, they were offloading vehicles and taking them around and, and so you say that's something we've been working with Mr. Edwards on, is not offloading in the street.
We take the art to Del Monte now.
Making sure fire lanes are open around the building and, you know, so.
I think it helps you that you've increased the service piece because certainly, as you mentioned, opening up that area for service, certainly, anyone, you know, people can take their Dodge to many different places. And I think you have lots of drivers who want to make sure that's an easy in and easy out and they're not going to be, you know, in any collision while they're trying to get to service. So that, I think, is compelling, that that is going to remain open for your own, for your own business.
And if the eight of you would hurry up before the end of the month, we could have eight less vehicles.
Don't talk to my wife.
I'm hoping you will.
Jim, if we grant additional parking, what happens then that goes to planning board?
Well, you're really not granting any, you're really reviewing a.
This was really a violation of the steep slope clause. So we brought it back to the town board and we've explained this to the applicant at PRC and to the audiences, you know, they still have to come back to the planning board. They would still have a preliminary final public hearing. We'd have to see cross-sections, the conservation board would look at it, we want to see how the stormwater.
We'd just say it's okay to go forward.
Yeah, you're just saying you're okay.
You're comfortable with what is being proposed and what the mitigation proposal is for what occurred on the site.
So we don't grant anything that goes to planning board and they could still hold things up or they could.
I mean, they could still whittle down the cars or, you know, dependent upon they got to fit in stormwater, they got to.
But there was a violation in your.
Mitigation and buffering, so there's other items that they're still going to, you know, there's still items that they have to work through on design side, which, you know, may.
I have to work with you more, Walt?
They may whittle that 46 number down to something smaller. There's no storage areas.
He's going to Texas.
I'm, I'm, I'd like to, I'm just, I'm comfortable with how much work has been done on this project in efforts but forward and the PRC's work, certainly in their comments and in this evening, I'm certainly comfortable with at this point, having this go to the planning board and just go through the regular process of, you know, whatever they need to do at this point. But I think there's been significant mitigation. I think, I think, I will offer up that I think landscaping and the berm is really key that happens at a lot of projects where it doesn't take much to make a spot look.
I agree.
Look really, really good and really inviting, particularly if you're trying to sell Jeeps.
Yes.
That would just be why I would offer up as far as, you know, more is better in that regard.
Any plans for lights?
None yet. In fact, I was up with Jet this morning at the adjacent property that he owns it. And I think there's enough lighting that he has on the back of his property that's going to carry over enough for what I, what I may need. So we have addressed.
And your lighting is more security, I would guess.
It is, it is.
I think that'll be an important part of the planning board's review processes. You know, it's one thing to see if they glow at nighttime on the hillside, you'll see much more than if they're just kind of there and, you know, not highlighted or.
We can see at nighttime, you can take a look, do lighting with Jet.
Is this the proposal, as we've been discussing here for the last half hour, what the planning board will be reviewing? Because I'm okay if.
They're going to have to put more detail to it.
Right. But I'm not okay if we give the okay and then the planning board's looking at something that we haven't.
There will be no, there will be no more parking other than what's been proposed.
The staff will be the liaison between the town board and the planning board. So if something changes.
The planning board is a decision-making board, so I want, you know, on the record to know that this is what I'm looking at.
If something changes, we'll go back to the town board and share with you guys an update, you know, what's changed.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. Good.